Okay. Thank you, sorry it was a bit late. Hard to get off the phone. Good evening, welcome to the abbreviated school committee meeting that we were having tonight, really to spend time updating the community on what has been going on in the community and with our schools. And I would appreciate it if we could take the roll. Joey?
Donna Halliday.
Present.
Bruce Menon.
Present.
Steve Cole.
Here.
Sheila Spalding.
Here.
Brian Callahan. Absent. David Hawkeizer. Absent. Sean Riordan. Absent.
Thank you, we have call. Shall we say? Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I suggest that we hold the minutes for approval for the next meeting?
Sure.
Just in case anybody notices something. The last part of consent agenda before we go into the content of the meeting is warrants. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Cole?
We have three warrants. The first warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls, the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $2,169.18 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Questionnaire, Mr.?
The next warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $15,409.24 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
And the last warrant, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $468,001.47 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Cole, at this point, I would like to sort of turn the meeting over to the mayor and the superintendent. It's an opportunity to share with the community what the city has been doing in this coronavirus crisis, what the schools are doing, giving everybody as much information and update as we can. It will be fine for school committee members to ask questions because this thing is unfolding in real time. We may not have all the answers at this point, but I think this is going to be ready for soon. Turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Sean to talk about what, we've had numerous meetings, numerous conversations, and in terms of where we're going with families and students, but I think it's important for the community to know that there are, in fact, there's another update that was just posted about an hour ago on the city website that looks like this, that has a lot of comprehensive information in the reports about what's going on. This is an unprecedented situation that none of us have ever had to deal with before. It's a highly contagious, rapidly spreading virus, and we are looking to our local, our state for direction and guidance and have posted information from CDC. So what we did was last, we began last Thursday inviting Mark Goldstein, who is the CEO of Anjex Hospital, and the medical director, Dr. Gail Futter, to come and meet with key staff to have a conversation about what they know, what their recommendations, and it was pretty clear that the information was slow in coming because we're not testing. So that makes it challenging to communities in terms of being able to quarantine, isolate. So after we had that meeting, getting the latest updates, and again, the best information that you've heard over and over and over again is wash your hands, 20 seconds, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, and if you can't wash your hands, then use sanitizer. And as you can see, we're sitting much further away from each other tonight for this school committee meeting, but we really felt that because we're in the process of setting up online go-to-meeting program, that we weren't quite ready to have an online school committee meeting, but we thought it was important for us to come together and have a conversation on camera with the community. So after we, people from the hospital left, all the department heads came together, Sean, Kathy Rico were there, as well as Steve Burcom, and you know, we really had good conversations about what we can do to protect staff and protect the public and how to go forward. So one of the first things we did was shut down the passport office at City Hall. That was just bringing people into City Hall that didn't need to be there at this time because I don't know where anybody's traveling to at this point anyway. We also shut down this senior center. The senior center is not providing any programming during the day from 8 to 4 Monday through Friday, but they are continuing to provide transportation to seniors who can call in. There's still staff here and can make arrangements to take people to doctor's appointments and whatever. And Meals on Meals is still operating on a daily basis out of our kitchen at this juncture. We also shut down youth services. We know that youth is a major carrier of this, even though they might not have symptoms of the coronavirus, so that made sense that we would shut down youth services. Again, staff are still there, they have plenty to do within the site, but they're also working with Roseanne Robillard, who is the executive director here, to identify volunteers who, in the event that we, you know, need help with distributing food or grocery shopping or walking dogs or whatever, we're collecting names of volunteers, and now we also need names of people who are in need of food, who are in need of some support. So please call here at the senior center to Roseanne Robillard, or call to youth services and speak to the staff there and relay your needs. We also made the decision on Saturday at 5:00 that we had to shut the public library down. All, there was at least at that point, there's probably more now, but there were 19 libraries in the greater area that had already shut down. And what we were starting to see was chatter on social media that students coming home from colleges and the other students were all going to start congregating at the library, which was not the right thing to do. And if that became the only public building open, we were going to be in trouble. So that building shut down at 5:00 on Saturday. Staff are still working there, they have plenty to do, and are also ready to mobilize and help with any other resources or supports. There's some good information on the library website. If you don't have a library card, you know, you can get one, you know, online and you can take out books and things because people have got to find time to, things to do when they're going to be home for several weeks. Today, we made the decision that we were shutting down City Hall tomorrow. And all the offices will be staffed, we will still be working, but we're not going to allow public access into the building. There is phone numbers on the door, so if you need something that's, you know, really critical, you can call that department and somebody will come out to talk to you. We figured that was the best way to keep things moving forward, but also to protect our staff as well as the public, especially since we don't have really good information at this point. And I'm concerned about food, but we had a good meeting with Sean, Kathy Rico, and Pam from Food Services today, and youth services will be providing support. So the kitchens at Breskahan High School will be cleared out and everything will be brought to Knock-Mullen as much as can be. And starting Wednesday from 10 to 12, there will be grab and go bag for families to come by, or even seniors, or anyone who needs food. It's not just going to be restricted to school families. So that will start on Wednesday at 10:00, so you can just drive up and someone will hand you a bag. They'll be, we need to make sure that Pam's doing bags for families as well as bags for singles because it could be, you know, one, two, and five. So I'm very grateful that we're able to do that at this point. And I've also been in touch with Lindsay Height, who runs our neighbors' table. They are going to continue to stay open. They're doing a high-level screening of volunteers, which we will do also when we get to that point where we start needing more volunteers to get out there in the community to help. We also, so please be sure that your information is getting to the schools, to Kathy Rico in particular, or the administrative offices, to let people know that you will need food, you will need whatever it is, and that you can become part of this Monday through Friday program to pick up a grab and go bag. In talking with Lindsay Height, she's going to try to keep that Thursday drop-off for food at the community service on Summer Street. And helping people will, again, the same kind of thing where people can drive up and they can be given food. We might have to organize food drives if this continues for multiple weeks, so you know, we'll certainly keep that avenue open and certainly want people to communicate to schools, to the senior center, youth services, or even to City Hall, if you are in need of food. We do not want families, seniors, or anyone struggling at this point with trying to get out to get food or who needs food. You probably all are aware from the governor's talk last night, his press conference, that starting tomorrow, restaurants are only able to do takeout. So there'll be no restaurants that are open until after April 6th is the timeframe, but that could change too based on what happens at this juncture. We've heard rumors of a confirmed case, but it hasn't been confirmed. So our first case, which hasn't been confirmed, and the way that works is that it looks like there'll be now greater opportunities for testing should people need it, but again, call, call, call. Do not go to the hospital, urgent care, or to your doctor's office. If you have a fever or sick, they want you to call first and then run through a series of questions and then could direct you to a place where you could be tested if they feel are in that category to be tested. If it comes through with a presumptive positive, then it goes to CDC to be confirmed, and then we'll come back to the state and be entered into that database, and then our Department of Public Health will be notified. So again, there's a long delay between potentially someone carrying the virus or being sick and us getting the information. So can't emphasize enough, the social distancing rule is really, really important, and there's a lot more information that went out through a memo this weekend from the superintendent's office that we both collaborated on, and I'll turn it over to Sean to talk about where things are.
Question?
Sure.
Has there been any determination made at this point about whether grocery stores are going to stay open? I know that they're sort of, they're being encouraged to stay open.
And that's what we understand, is pharmacies and grocery stores are going to remain open. You know, again, things could change, but you know, at this point, that's where we are.
Great. Superintendent?
Yes, so as the mayor said, and as all of us understand, this is an evolving situation. Things change rapidly, and we make adjustments as we move on. So on the school side, after the mayor's meeting on Thursday with all the departments, as we came back to the central office, I think, looking at the circumstances with a potential close in the near future, I think the administration, and we made a decision ahead of time Thursday night to keep the students home for Friday and to give our staff and support staff time to develop plans, online plans and learning opportunities for students, just in case we had a long closure down the road. So obviously, that came a lot quicker than we anticipated. So Friday morning, as a faculty, our administration and the leadership team, we met in the morning, and I can't say enough, Joey and Gail are my administrative team, since Thursday, working, you know, many late hours, you know, 11, 11:30, 12 at night, just to make sure we have all the plans. But so Friday morning, we had an administrative leadership team before the staff came in. We kind of outlined what we wanted to do with the faculty. We developed grade-level enrichment opportunities. The staff was phenomenal. By the end of the day at 2:00, those different lessons and learning opportunities were created. At the same time, there's a very important commissioner, Commissioner Riley, conference call in the morning, along with the Massachusetts Department of Health. We listened to that conference call from 9:00 to 10:00. Many of the superintendents, if not all superintendents, throw the word of God advice there. After that conversation, the superintendents continued to collaborate afterwards, and there was another follow-up conference call around noon time. The North Shore superintendent felt at that time, with a lot of the information that was being provided for us, that we felt it was in the best interest of our students and the families to go ahead of the state recommendations and close for two weeks. That decision was made probably around 1, I would say around 2:00, that we were going to be closed for two weeks before the public really knew. And then at that time, we reassembled our administrative team. There was 28 school districts that signed a press release that was supposed to be released at one time, and I'll get to that in a minute. But on our administrative team, that's where we started to collaborate and said, okay, we're going to close for two weeks, we're going to look at these online opportunities, and then we asked the what-if questions. We brainstormed pretty clearly. What if students don't have internet access? What happens if they don't have a device at home? What are we going to do? So the principals throughout the weekend have been emailing and communicating with families to get a list of students that may not have devices to access online opportunities and enrichment. We still continue with that list in that outreach. Right now, district-wide, we probably have 12 families, and students are going to come in tomorrow and pick up a device so they can have that access. The other piece that was very important to us was reaching out to Comcast and for internet for some students and families that don't have internet access. And right now, we believe that Comcast is going to give free internet for all families, which is a great, a great opportunity for our students that don't have internet access, and we're still fine-tuning that. The other piece that comes into play when you have a large school district, as we do, especially in the Cape Hanley, we're one of the bigger ones, we're not like we have 2,300 families, but we have 500 staff. So then we brainstormed our staff, you know, office hours, what are those going to look like if we need to open up the offices? What about our hourly employees? So our crossing guards who are vital to the system, cafeteria workers who are on hourly who are not part of a union, we're going to continue to pay those employees, so we're not changing anything in that sense. So these are a lot of the, on Friday afternoon, a lot of the decisions that were being made. The other aspect of our meetings Friday afternoon is we met with all the union presidents, the teachers' union, ASME union, and then the paraprofessionals, and we all brainstormed and we had them ask us questions that we may not have been thinking about because, as I said, from noon time to 2:00 with the two-week closure, we really had to get a lot of things in place before everyone left the building. So that was really our primary focus, where we knew we had the online opportunities available, we knew down the road we're going to have internet access, we have a plan in place for families that don't have a device. Our teachers are now going to be developing and working with the principals, and checking with students and families throughout, and we'll have more details with that. We have another administrative meeting tomorrow afternoon. By the time those meetings ended, and when you have 28 different communities that are on a press release of school closures, and part of my communication to the Newburyport families, you know, we apologize that, you know, we were on a list that went out, I think a lot, maybe more ahead of time, of a timely meeting, but in my, as superintendent of schools, I knew we were going to be closing for two weeks, but I just wanted to make sure we had all of our pieces in place for that. So I know some families heard about this and saw the press release earlier before we could send out our communication, but I think that was, you know, we made that decision to close, and for us, it was really working with our administrators, our teacher unions, and all of the unions, just to make sure if we're closed, we have everything in place. And as part of my communication that went out on Friday regarding the two-week closure, we added some of that information about the online resources. As we moved into today, we closed all buildings today to allow some of the cleaning that went on to settle in. As I said before, we're going to have another administrative leadership meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 to reiterate the online access and making sure families have devices, and principals will be once again reaching out to families. Over the weekend, my next priority, and the same with the mayor, and our priority, was our at-risk families, families with food insecurities, but also, I think, all families. As the mayor said, we want to provide food, breakfast and lunch for all families because it doesn't matter if you're at risk, food insecure, there's a lot of families at home that are being impacted by this virus, and we want to make sure that we're providing food, not only to our families, but the entire community of Newburyport, and working with the mayor and her departments, I think that's a priority. I think our feeling here is we're in this together. I think we really all need to be patient, be flexible, and understand a plan that we develop right now at this time, two hours from now, we could all change with the information that we're getting. Our number-one priority, I think, for the school system, for the families, the staff, and everybody in this community, is the safe and the well-being. So our academic opportunities for us provides an opportunity for students for enrichment. We're not mandating they have to log on for 15 hours and do all this work because I really believe that all of us, we're dealing with the unknown, and there's that, some anxiety and not knowing what's going to happen tomorrow and down, you know, the next week. And I really believe we need, as parents and educators and family members, to really pull together and to focus on what's important. And for us, what's really important at this time is for all of us to support one another, to understand there's going to be things that are changing. And yes, obviously, we provided academic opportunities for students to maintain some academics, but at this time, as we said, our number-one priority is safety and the well-being of everybody. And as we said, at the building level, the principals have a full understanding of their families and the needs, and they will continue to reach out, and if things change where, you know, if you didn't need a device today, or you had internet access today, and next week you need a device or something happens, then reach out to the principals and we'll take care of that. I tried to cover a lot of different aspects of a lot of the decisions that were made in the whole process, but as I said, you know, the mayor and I were talking throughout the weekend, Pam Kaylee, Kathy Rico instrumental, and a lot of the support for our families, I can't say enough. And then really, all of our administrators, teachers, just amazing, amazing community, and I'm privileged to be the superintendent here. So I think as we continue to move forward, if things change or when things change, we'll obviously continue to communicate. But as I said, it's, you know, it's, we're uncharted waters, and as long as we stay together and focus on the health and well-being of everybody in this community, I think we'll be okay. And that's our number-one priority. So if there are things that I put out there that I might have missed that you need me to follow up on a bit?
Well, I think there's one thing, because I think one of the things that I think did happen over the weekend is that I started getting bombarded with emails and texts about all the kids and all the people who were out at restaurants and shopping and don't really know what's going on. And so Sean and I spoke and said, you know, I think we need to send another message out to families that, you know, kids are carriers, they might not have symptoms, but you know, this is very, very serious, and that, you know, we really need parents to not to play dates and sleepovers and, you know, have 12 kids in the basement playing video games and, you know, this is, this is how this can really spread. So we really do need parents to follow the guidelines that we put in this memo that was sent out over the weekend, asking them to, you know, please keep to the immediate family and, you know, stay, dealing with your own immediate family. Even, you know, the government recommended that, you know, you don't see your grandparents, your grandchildren, because that could be very serious. So, you know, we're posting as much information as we can on both the school website, in particular, the city website. I mean, it's amazing to me how much has changed just in four days, when I look at that last posting, which was just Thursday night, and here we are today. And there'll be more information tomorrow. So don't hesitate to reach out to any of us if you have questions, but I think the most important thing that I've been trying to emphasize to people is to communicate. You know, we need to know, we can't help, we can't help if we don't know what's going on. And there are a ton of people in this community ready to step up, but, you know, please, there's a lot of places you can reach out and let us know, and we'll continue to coordinate the information. And we will continue to meet, you know, multiple times a week in small groups or in larger groups to, you know, address any additional changes that should come down.
Thank you. You've given us a snapshot. This is superintendent.
I just wanted to add one other thing. I had the opportunity to talk with our neighbors' table today and the Pettingill House. And so just to reiterate, please let us know if you are in need. I believe that our neighbors' table is going to move the community service market next week, not this week, next week, to the Knock, so that all food pickup will happen in the same location.
That's good.
So that would be a week from Thursday, that that's going to happen for our neighbors' table. And also, you know, if you're in need of other social services beyond food, please let us know because Pettingill House is looking to partner with us to help support those needs as well.
So I think it's a pretty up-to-date snapshot of where we are, and sort of given the understanding, it's a fluid situation, it's changing, and that we may not have all the answers, I wanted to give school committee members an opportunity to ask any questions they might have. I have a few, but do you guys have any questions for the mayor or for the superintendent?
First of all, CPAC wanted to offer their assistance in any way they can, so they are really and willing to help.
It's the special ed parent's?
Yes, sorry. Special ed parents advisory council. And there was just a general question, if you could elaborate on how parents who are receiving services, or parents of students who are receiving services are being assisted.
Right, and I think for us, right now, we're providing the learning opportunities, but we're also with our teacher and our teacher staff checking in with families at this time, you know, and getting information if, you know, individual students need some more support and how we can provide that. But we're still getting, with special ed and the services aspect, getting guidance from the state on, because everyone has now shut down and, you know, we're getting information on some of those scenarios for students that might need services and may, you know, with the online access and what are those going to look like. So for our students with disabilities who are needing services, we'll be providing a little bit more, I think, information. But for us, I think it's really providing enrichment opportunities for students to access and not really mandating, because we understand the seriousness of what we're running. So I'll be, you know, if, you know, as Angela was talking about, if we have students that are kind of anxious and really, we don't want to add more anxiety in the sense of you need to complete all these lessons by the end of the week. So leaving it really up to parents and students to access those enrichment opportunities when they feel they can, you know. So you may have some students that are comfortable and they want to, you know, if they're home, they want to work on a lot of the academics, that's great. You may have other students that, they're not ready to do that yet. So for us, it's taking a look at all of this and getting a little bit more guidance from the DES regarding students on, you know, with learning disabilities and how we can support them.
Right. How about students who receive physical therapy or occupational therapy at school? I know that it's possible to do virtually in some of these cases.
Yeah, and all of our, within, all of our service providers within the And all of our, within, all of our service providers within the school that do have students in the caseload are going to be reaching out to those families and checking in and providing, I think, not only just the check-in, but suggestions on how they can continue to, you know, to progress. So I'm not sure if you want to follow up on that.
Yeah. I think on Friday, as our teachers worked, all of our related service providers and our special education teachers worked collaboratively with the classroom teachers as they were setting up these online platforms, and they worked diligently to try to tier what was being offered so that all of our students could access it. But I know there was a lot of work done around what the possibilities could be down the road to provide more targeted assistance to some of the students that might need it. So now that we know we're extended for a week longer than that, I'm sure that they'll be reaching out around some of those things. But it was certainly in the forefront of all of our conversations, certainly not that we could meet everything that an IEP says this way, but that we wanted to be equitable in the kind of access that we were offering for students.
And I just want to say, exactly. And I think when we started to, you know, that Friday morning, we met as a leadership team, and then we went into and had the faculty and sports staff work on lessons, that was like a number-one priority or the first concern, you know, what about our students, you know, average students and also the students with learning disabilities, how, you know, what's this going to look like for them? And I think going back to Assistant Superintendent Beck, that was a focus, and that's why we had service providers along with special education teachers working with mainstream teachers and all of those to tier those lessons. Now, for us, we're pretty comfortable in the sense of, you know, where we're at today, but we know we're going to have to regroup, especially if this, the school closings last a little bit longer. And that's why a lot of the superintendents reached back out to the commissioner and said, you know, this is great, but now, you know, you keep asking, but now every decision you make, it's a trickle-down effect, and you're going to be impacting different stakeholders within the school community. So our next question is going to be to the commissioner, this is why we're going to have another conference call with him, is regarding special education services down the road. Like, and so right now, we're providing, as I said, learning opportunities and enrichment for all students, but down the road, what is this going to look like if it becomes a little bit more structured? I were, I have to admit, and I want to credit teacher, I can't say enough about the teaching staff. Our service providers and special education teachers, as we were saying, are willing, they're going to be reaching out to these individual families that they're working with to do a check-in, to see how things are going, which is just amazing on their part. And then, you know, for us, to regroup and get some of that input and figure out how we can support really everybody throughout. So, and, you know, it's kind of where we're at right now.
Sure. Just, I just wanted to jump in and confirm with you something that you said and might have sort of slipped by, that the learning enrichment activities were planned grade by grade.
Correct.
So all the sixth-grade teachers and all the fourth-grade teachers got together and planned these enrichment activities.
Exactly.
So there are age and content, grade and content appropriate.
Correct. We had, all the teachers worked together in groups to identify what enrichment activities they felt would continue. The education and allow, it's not just the enrichment activities that the teachers created, but they also provide a lot of online support of different platforms where students can go practice math lessons and literacy and things like that.
And I think that's a key component. You know, we're having, for example, WGBH, PBS has opened all of their educational services for free now, so those are accessible to anybody. And we're receiving that kind of information from many of the online learning platforms that they're opening without subscription. So we're sharing that information with our teachers. As it becomes available, our teachers are sharing with one another. So they're continuing to build the experience, to enrich it. I think that, you know, they, our teachers, as you said, worked in grade levels at our elementary years, but once we got to middle school, middle school and high school, they worked within content areas, and they really worked to identify the core focus areas that would reduce any kind of regression during this time that we're out of school. And that's really what they focused on, and they agreed upon that so that there would be consistency. For example, at the middle school, where we have two different teams, the teams worked together to come to agreement about what those core focus areas would be. So it was a thoughtful process, even though it happened quickly, everybody was really all in.
Additional questions?
I just like how the superintendent really presented the fact that this is about safety first, and it impacts everybody, and I think we can't stress that enough. I mean, before I came to the meeting tonight, I was watching some news briefs on what's going on in Italy, and it's just incredible how that country's been devastated, or sections of that country has been devastated, where it's almost like martial law, we have to move around with a signed paper to go certain places and do certain things. So again, I credit everyone's thinking in the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, on limiting, you know, the space, the spacing, because, again, I have a couple of daughters that work in healthcare, one of them works actually Beth Israel Deaconess in the emergency department, and, you know, I can't, the importance of universal precautions, infection control, those are the things that help prevent or limit virus and nosocomial spread, so, but it affects everybody. And I think that we're, as a community, we're taking that, that we got to beat on that, and I appreciate your leadership in that, Mayor Holliday, because, you know, we have to care for everybody.
And I think one thing that we didn't necessarily talk about was the fact that every office now has, you know, sanitary wipes and disinfectant spray and hand sanitizer. We have signs, you know, at the front of C Hall, every entrance, use the sanitizer before probably going into any office, you know, which won't be as, hopefully, as big of a concern since the C Hall will be shut down tomorrow. But the deep cleaning has also happened in the schools, that's, you know, over the last several days, that has been happening too. So, you know, I think we've tried to approach this from, you know, every angle possible, you know, at this juncture. And the other thing I can share is that there has been some movement on the state level that if you are impacted by the coronavirus and your job as a waiter or bartender, whatever, there's programs that are now starting to come together that can help people who will be financially impacted by this. And we will get that information up on the city website tomorrow or as soon as the details are available. How about that, too?
Thank you. We are, I think that that's an important thing that we can convey to the community, that people should be looking every day at the city website for new additional information. What's going to happen with the district? Because I know that things are changing on a rapid basis. How can we, where do we want people to go to get information about what's happening?
Yeah, I think what we plan on doing is having right on the district webpage, we already have a lot of resources that people can go, and, but I think we're going to take another look at that to make it a lot easier and have that just, you know, right on the front, where we can publicize a lot of the communications that have already gone out and update people. I think Kathy Ricchio has did an incredible job with the health services information that are on there. But we're going to take another look at our website, because we want, if people are going and looking for information, we want that front and center where they don't have to navigate. So I think that that's one aspect. And plus, a lot of the communications that we sent out to our school community and parents, I think we'll also keep those updated, you know, throughout.
Do you want my recipe for homemade sanitizer? Since you can put it out there.
Oh, nice. You got the goods.
It's a good at-home science experiment.
It is a good at-home science experiment. I'll be happy to provide. Anybody have any additional questions or thoughts that you would like to share? We will probably, for our next meeting, do it electronically. I know the city's been exploring how to do that, how to do that within the executive board that the governor gave us about people participating. So look for more information about that, both at the city website and our website. Got a vacation of some sort here, so we'd like to see each other in meetings, at least for the next school committee meeting.
Thank you for the budget.
Yes, and.
We'll have some time to review.
We will, we will. A number of items that were on the agenda, there was nothing that was on the agenda that we dispensed with tonight that needed a critical vote tonight. So we will, we will be picking up all of those items. The school committee will work with the district to sort of figure out what new sequence of events is. Have a budget forum to come up that can't have more than 10 or 25 people at. So we're going to have to figure that out. We'll be having conversations by phone with each other about how we can organize things going forward.
Right. And the budget book that you received was from Mr. Lysick's presentation of kind of where we're at. Obviously, the coronavirus and all of the work that's gone in, that's been our number-one priority. So once we settle down a little bit, we'll be able to refine our budget and try to get it.
The governor did make mention that there was possibility that they will be filing legislation to extend the deadlines for, you know, our NIP 21 budget. So, I mean, just cancel, we've done some budget meetings on the city side, but, you know, that's not been a priority right now, it's not. So we'll just cross the bridge when we get there in terms of.
I just wanted to give one more opportunity. Is there a way that the city hall is sort of triaging these calls? Where do you want people who need stuff to call?
Mayor's office.
Mayor's office.
That's fine.
And questions about, you know, their health, the virus itself, probably makes more sense to call the health department, get staff filled in those calls down there. And then, you know, obviously, if there's a family that, you know, needs assistance or help, call the administrative offices or the mayor's office too, because we will be talking, do, I say I should just have Sean speed dial and help me, because the number of hours we have been in conversations and meetings since Thursday. But it's important, because these are, you know, I think, one of the most important things besides being safe and social distancing and taking care of your families and washing your hands and all of those kinds of things, and checking in on your neighbors too, which I really think is really, really important for seniors in your neighborhood to be sure that you're doing that also. It's important.
And for the schools, central office is continuing to be open at this point.
Yes.
Do people contact the principals through the schools? How do you?
Well, where from? I think it's like twofold. So I think a lot, our principals are sending out a lot of messages to their families regarding updates. Kathy Ricchio, I think is a great resource if people have questions regarding.
Kathy is later.
She's our lead nurse, yeah.
I know that she's been working on this stuff for weeks.
Yeah, she's been, yeah, long before it's had the impact it's had. And, you know, I can't say enough about her and her efforts and commitment to provide updated information. So I think if there's questions regarding health and safety, obviously Kathy Ricchio, obviously, central office will be open. But a lot of the individual questions, I think, at grade level regarding online learning and things of that nature, can email the principals, and so we're all going to be in contact with the families. But, you know, as the mayor said, I just think, and for the parents and this great community, I think we're in this together. And every new challenge we have or every change that we have, we'll readjust, communicate, and just continue to work together, and that's all we can do. And I think that's what separates.
And our goal also is to ensure that every staff gets paid.
Correct.
So if you're a part-time staff, I don't want you to be, we don't want you to be stressed or worried about that.
Correct.
But it's also important that if you're sick, you stay home, and then you use your sick time, and just communicate that to, you know, your supervisor who, who are. Great. Anything else?
Nope. Anybody have anything else they want to add or share?
Thank you for all that you've done. Continue to do. I appreciate it.
I have a little announcement. I just looked at the time, and I just heard today that Principal Sullivan is doing bedtime stories at 7:30 on the Brezner Hand Facebook page, and that it will be accompanied by activities for the following day associated to the story. So if that's applicable to you, you might want to tune in.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, this is reading court right there.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Let's give Steve the second and Sheila the motion.
Sounds good to me.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.